August 30. And sorry, here's something coming up. And then Devin Max, he also started as a communications officer on August 30. Our spotlight on business, so Spire Collected, they were named a prestigious. Inc's 5,000 fastest burning private companies for 2021. You know, again, another from Savannah company. Spire Collective is a parent company for e-commerce companies, store your board.com and teal triangle.com. Store your board.com. They started, gosh, it was probably about, I want to say two, three years ago. And they, they provide storage products for recreational goods. And then you'll triangle.com will also be a direct to consumer website slated to launch this month. And they're located up in Zion's Crossroads at the Starlight Business Park and like I said, a great business to have in Savannah County. Just some, some changes that we have going on at Parks and Rec. Parks Rec staff installed four speed bumps throughout the park on Tuesday, August 31. That main road kind of going between the Pleasant Grove House, Farm Heritage Museum, and going back to the pole barn. Some people. Get a little, a little quick through there sometimes. So just so, you know, we have people walking around. This is just a better way to make, make the park safe and make the area around there. As it's, you know, a pedestrian area, just provide for some better, some better safety for, for those that are in the park. I'm talking about COVID, COVID testing. So I'm at the Savannah County Health Department, basically up in the parking lot, right in front of the courthouse in the county admin building. Every Wednesday evening from five to seven PM, they're doing walk up appointments. Anyone from age two and older, and I can personally tell you, it was a quick, quick and easy process. You can be in and out of there and probably about 15 minutes at, at, at tops. So again, every Wednesday, the Florida health department is doing free COVID testing. And in addition, the Blue Ridge Health District is also doing at the health department there, right in the county admin building. They are doing vaccination clinics, masks are required to enter the health department. And those are occurring from nine 30 to 11 30 on Wednesdays. And then also from one 30 to three 30 on Wednesdays. They have both appointments and lockups or lockups are available. And for any information, you can call the Blue Ridge Health District hotline at four, three, four, nine, seven, two, six, two, six, one. Also, they have Sunday, September 12th, 2021. They're doing in the village, there's going to be a fall into the village, kind of a Palmyra outdoor art market happening in the village. During that event also, VDH is also going to be their Blue Ridge Health District doing a shot on the spot. They'll be doing vaccinations right there during the Palmyra outdoor art market during September 12th, 2021. And certainly for more information on where you can get vaccinations, go to blu ridge HD.org. Just a few changes for some meetings coming up, nothing changing with meeting dates. But just one thing to note is we are changing the meeting location. For upcoming meetings for the second meeting in September and our meetings for October, for sure. We're going to be doing those meetings at the performing at the Carriage Brook Performing Arts Center. So your next meeting, September 15th at seven PM will be at Carriage Brook Performing Arts Center. October 6th at four PM, Carriage Brook Performing Arts Center. And then Wednesday, October 20th at seven PM, we'll be at the Carriage Brook Performing Arts Center. And it's a little bit of a twofold thing. One. And, and let me just say this too, the planning commission meeting also on September 14th is also going to be at the Carriage Brook Performing Arts Center. If you remember from our last meeting, we had comments regarding Village Gardens. The planning commission is going to be hearing, going to be hearing that particular item on the agenda that evening. So one Carriage Brook Performing Arts Center provides for a little, a little more flexibility for spacing and for those wanting to attend the meeting. But again, we'll, we'll be there. And then like I said, Ms. Hoffman has some, some big book sales where that room that you're in right now is going to look like a, a library here before you know it. And just with some of these larger meetings coming up, I think the Carriage Brook Performing Arts Center will be a good transition for us for the interim and we'll see how things go from there. But from that, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Any question?
Thank you very much.
I just, for the record, Mr. Doll, you have a breakthrough COVID case, correct?
I'm, I'm sorry.
You, you have a breakthrough COVID case, right?
I do, correct. I am fully vaccinated.
Thank you.
Alrighty, next up, special presentation, 2021 VACO Achievement Award presented to the Savannah County Library. Jeremy Bennett, VACO Director of Intergovernmental Affairs.
So Mr. Chair, like I said, this is a 2020 VACO Achievement Award. And I'm going to put Ms. Harris on the spot very, very briefly. I'll, I'll give her much deserved credit on this. VACO does achievement awards every year. And, um, you know, Ms. Harris, just looking around, looking at different departments, what we're doing submitted to for the library and Parks and Rec. So Ms. Harris, do you want to talk a little bit about, about the achievement awards? And then we can hand it over to Mr. Bennett. Mr. Bennett, thank you for being here this evening for the special presentation.
I didn't particularly want to, but.
About what, what was submitted?
So I think every employee of Savannah County did an absolute rock star job of the last 18 months. When we, when we got the invitation to highlight the good works employees have done from VACO. I immediately thought of, sorry about this, Cindy, I immediately thought of Parks and Rec. They sort of just spun themselves all around and found ways to stay employed as much as anything. And different really out of the box ways of, of offering programming and keeping kids active more than anything. And that quickly, very quickly followed, looking at what the library had done. So we wanted to highlight customer service for the library and then Parks and Rec. And, and honestly, Parks and Rec really should have got it. But Nelson County had this dag on tunnel that they did, so we really couldn't compete with the tunnel. So I like to say every single time Savannah County Parks and Rec is really a winner because they really went above and beyond. We just don't have a tunnel or a mountain to compete with, but the library. Just really allowed their patrons to still be active, still be involved, still get all of the services that they were receiving before COVID. In a way that was just, I thought, really inspired. So anyway, I wrote them up, sent them in. And Jeremy Bennett is here to present the library's award.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. Being a resident of Louisa County, I'm blessed to be in Savannah County. Yes. And to know that whether it's Nelson, Louisa or Savannah, there are winners all around this region. And it's truly a blessing to live here and to recognize their achievements. So, Mr. Chair, administrative doll members of the board. As I said, I'm Jeremy Bennett, VACO Director of Intergovernmental Affairs. It is a pleasure to be here. I just saw Mr. Chair at the VACO County Official Summit where, as you're all aware, he is a member of the VACO Board of Directors. And it's a pleasure to see him and everyone else. It is my distinct privilege to present the VACO Achievement Awards to Savannah County. And for the benefit of your constituents, who may not be familiar with the Virginia Association of Counties. VACO has existed since 1934 to serve and support your efforts as county officials. We support counties in many ways. First is through our advocacy efforts in the state legislature and also in the federal government. We also serve counties through our educational programs, member services and communication efforts. In 2003, we established our achievement award program to recognize counties that have adopted innovative approaches to providing public services and identifying programs that could serve as models for other counties. Today, I'm proud to present your county with an achievement award. This is our 19th annual achievement award program. In 2021, we received 102 entries and 30 winners were selected from 19 counties. This is truly competitive. It's about only 29% of entries were selected as winners. Savannah County has won two achievement awards. Second, the first achievement award was won in 2015 for a program titled Pleasant Grove Meadow Management. And I, I love their Pleasant Grove Park. It's always great to visit. So Ted Povar, our retired associate director of the Virginia's Institute of Government. Dr. Shirley Bailey, visiting professor of practice at Virginia Tech and former Chesterfield County Deputy County Administrator. And Larry Land, retired VACO Director of Policy Development, served as judges for this year's statewide competitive awards. They did a great job. I'd like to thank them for their time, dedication and enthusiasm. There were several criteria our judges filed as for the guidelines to the program. Does the program offer innovative solution or to a problem, situation or delivery of services? Does the program promote intergovernmental cooperation or cooperation with local, state or federal entities? Does the program provide a model that other local governments may learn from or implement in their own communities? And is the program based on programs from another public and private entity, but represents an innovative approach or customization by local government? And of course, the judges use their own discretion and instincts in making their final decisions. And to quote Ted Povar, one of the judges who served as judge since the inception of the program in 2003. Quote, "I continue to be inspired by the good work done by Virginia's counties. Year after year, counties prove the achievement wars are a treasure trove of ideas and innovation." And for, as I said, I'm here to present the actual award. And as Kelly said, the Savannah County Public Library wanted and needed to continue providing services during the pandemic. Closures because of COVID 19, COVID 19 gave library staff an opportunity to get creative and adapt to the new reality of physical distancing enclosures. And to fundamentally change how services were provided. In order to keep staff and customers safe, the library implemented curbside delivery, grabbing go kits, virtual story time and much more. And it's my understanding that this was done on day one of the closure or immediately after. These programs serve as lifelines for children, the elderly and other members of the Savannah community during an unprecedented time and serve as a model for other local governments. And I think they truly lived up to the mission of the library to serve as a source of information, intellectual development, entertainment and personal enrichment for the residents of Savannah County. So VACO would like to, on behalf of VACO, I'd like to congratulate Savannah County again for its excellent program. And we look forward to your participation in the 2022 Achievement Award. And Mr. Chair, I have the actual award here. And if I can present that to someone and maybe get a few pictures.
Do we have a picture taker? Caitlin, Ms. Lee's come around there. Y'all, y'all right there together. Y'all got it. Oh, you want to get the whole board in there? All right.
Well, let's be mentioned at the VACO convention conference in November, that everybody can hear.
We'll be showcasing the achievements of all counties who participated in the program.
Can't zoom in?
I can, but then I start losing the whole left and right. See, I don't want to cut you out.
That might be good.
There we go.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I'd like to reiterate, I think everybody did a great job trying to get through this. Still are in the process of getting through it. Next up, we will now open the first round of public comments. Anyone wish to address the board? Please state your name, address, keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct you to the board. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at this time? Okay. Alrighty, seeing none, hearing none, I will now close the first round of public comment. There are no public hearings. We'll move forthback forward with action matters. A Fuzzy Morris Omahundra well rehabilitation contract missed over.
Good afternoon. This is for the Fuzzy Morris Omahundra well rehabilitation. You guys go to the next page. Oh, thank you. We're citing by the Virginia Department of Health, there are certain things that the county is required to do to improve the fuzzy water work system. Taking these items into account, the county issued an IFB for the rehabilitation of these two locations. At the Morris plant, we have to do the wealth rehabilitation and yield and drawdown testing. Rehabilitate, rehabilitate the green sand filters and repipe the wellhouse and pump replacement. At Omahundra, we have to do the well rehabilitation and yield and drawdown testing. Rehabilitate the green sand filters and replace the pitless unit and force main to wellhouse. Next page. The county did receive only one bid for the work from Sidner Hydro. Sidner Hydro has been routinely working with the fuzzy system, so they are very familiar with both wells and the requirements that the health department has put on us. Keep in mind that per the American Rescue Plan Act, this is a project that can be used with that money. And we can either fund it completely with that money, or we can use part of Fork Union Sanitary District's fund balance. At this point, the unaudited fund balance as of June 30th was $164,087. Any questions? It would just be up to you guys to decide how you want to break up those costs and, and move forward.
My, my first question would be, I think the fund balance, so Mr. Stevens, when he redid the. Prices, because wasn't it a zero or in the red?
Mr. Doll. Yeah, Mr. Chair, well, as you know, back in, I want to say probably up until 2014. We were on a long record of trying to turn the system around and making it, making it, you know, positive with, from a, from a fund balance standpoint.
Or even break even.
Yeah, well, yes, but we have, and we have been inching up year by year to do that. You know, so right now Fuzzy's fund balance is 164,000. Now, if the board decided that they wanted to use a, a portion of this, was kind of the discussion last meeting. I certainly would not recommend using all that. And, and honestly, from, 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 from my recommendation, just knowing. What, how old the system is, other things that still need to be done in the system. If we can use the American Rescue Plan Act funds for this, I would recommend. Use the American Rescue Plan Act funds in the entirety for this. You know, we've got a Dominion project coming up in the southern part of the county that will provide some new infrastructure. But, but remember that is for new, you know, new water treatment system, you know, tanks, you know, some. For some of the areas that are within, within the Dominion terror, within a. The territory by the Dominion coal ash plant, but there are lots and lots of miles and pipes in the fuzzy area that are just, that are going to be replaced at some point.
Right.
And so, so my rec, my recommendation is, is to use ARPA totally.
All right. Are there any comments, questions from anyone? Mr. Waiver?
No, but if we can avoid using our funds, I think it's a good deal for us.
If we use the funds for that, then we can come back and make sure that we have that in our pocket when we need it.
We need to keep, we need to not use the fuzzy funds.
I guess I'm cut off here. I need to get closer to the mic. I don't think we should use the $100,000 for the reasons that Eric just said. That was the first thing I thought when I read the board package. If we have this amount of money, we should use all of it for fuzzy. For the rehabilitation of those of the Morris and Omaha dwelling, keep that money in the county.
And. Okay, Mr. Doll.
Yeah, just Mr. Chair, just looking at the motion here. So, so I know it's a little complicated, but the bullets there. So the first one is if, if the board says we want to use the entire 290,000, 250, then, then you just read the motion and put. 290,000, 250 in the blank there. And the, the, the second bullet, we just, we don't even, we don't even address it all because that's only if we plan on using any fuzzy funds.
So the, the balance on the ARPA fund, is it 2,006?
It's 2,006 right now. And remember, we're going to get another 2,006. So just to kind of give you a, just kind of give you a little overview. So, so 2,006 right now. You already approved, it's just roughly under $40,000 for some. The FEMA wastewater treatment evaluation. Remember, the board is moving forward with, with the resolution and the VADI application for CEVAC. And, and the required match for that was 600,000. So if the board approves this at, at 290, let's just call it, let's just call it between those three items, it'll probably be, you know, roughly under 150,000 that the board has, has allocated. Or so far out of the 2.6 million that we've received far and will receive another 2.6 million in about July, July. Here. And then we have the funds to utilize and extend until December 31st, 2024.
Okay, more than a motion?
Yes, ma'am, if you're ready to make a motion.
I move the board of supervisors, approve funding for the Fuzzy Morris and Omahundra well rehabilitation project as follows. A budget transfer of 290,250 from the FY22 Act, American Rescue Plan Act contingency line. To the FY22 American Rescue Plan Act Contract Services line.
Got a motion made by Ms. Eager and seconded by Ms. Booker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passed by zero. Next, B, resolution.
There's one more motion.
I do a second one for the contract, my fault. Do I have a motion for this one?
I move the. We need to move these TVs back to the next station. I move the board of supervisors approved contract between Savannah County and Signal Hydro Incorporated for the Fork Union. Santa Edition Morris and Omaha hundred well rehabilitation, an amount of 290,250 dollars. And further authorize the county administrator to execute the agreement subject to approval as to form that accounting attorney.
Motion made by Ms. Booker and seconded by Ms. Eager. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passed by zero. Now we'll move forward with B. Resolution for transportation alternatives program, tap grant, Mr. Moss.
Good evening, Chairman Sheridan, members of the board. If you remember, I was before you, um, back on August 4th. And we did a positive discussion about the tap grant process. I'm going to just briefly go over the information here. What we're doing tonight is we're in stage two of the tap grant application. And we need a resolution from the board of supervisors to support us to continue to finish the tap grant process by October 1st. So again, this Palmyra Village Streetscape project is part of your strategic initiatives program as C7. So that's, that's the most important part of this slide. The work would be for constructing concrete sidewalks and related concrete curbing along Stone Jail Street. Removing the actual road of Court Square and providing additional on-street parking. We did qualify, worked, worked with VDOT and the VDOT Palm, Palm Upper and Louisa Office Staff Members. And the work would be done mainly on Stone Jail Street and creating Court Square. And just to, two pictures, showed you many last time, this is the concrete wall area that would be removed within a sidewalk being added. And then this is the road that bisects Court, the Court Square currently now. And then, yes, and then as Eric's showing you, that's the road that would be removed and the sidewalk work would be done on Stone Jail Street. And then this is the summary of the tap grant request for funding for a 20% match. That's, that's 268,600 dollars. As we told you last time in August 4th, we really think the project will be well under a million dollars. But this is the worst case summary scenario from VDOT. In their calculations, as they get into the project, if this project were funded, there's going to be a lot of cost savings that would be involved. But again, the 20% match would be required.
And, and, and Mr. Chair too, and, and board members, we don't have to commit or allocate these funds at this point. We would do that once we knew whether or not the grant was approved.
And if the grant is not approved, then this doesn't go forward. Is that correct?
That's correct. If the, if the, if this grant is not approved, then a project does not go forward. This is a VDOT managed project. It's not managed by Savannah County Public Works. So the VDOT staff and funding right now, in working with them, we found out we're in a very good opportunity to receive this grant. Based on, as I told you before, folks from Charlottesville and Albemarle are not applying for tap grants. At this point, they're working on larger MPO projects, so.
We don't have that 268, 600 in our budget though, do we?
No, that's true.
No, that's, that's.
It's not in the budget right now. Oh, so we could do one of two things, you know, if the county, if the county gets the grant, the county could decide that they would choose to use fund balance, unassigned fund balance to fund that project. When it becomes due, when we know that we're awarded that. Again, this is a project that's going to take quite some time to, to move forward on. We could also budget for it during the budget process. Again, they're not anticipating. You know, that this is going to even start construction until, when was it Douglas?
2025.
Yeah.
So we're looking in several budget years ahead of time, but this, that's what you have to do with VDOT projects. So you have to ask for the money early and often for these type of tap grant requests. And that's just the schedule. We're just here to ask if you, the board of resolution would be approved. So that we can proceed forward in the final month of the request to complete the tap grant application.
Are there any questions? Comment? Okay, do we have a motion?
I move the Savannah County Board of Supervisors adopted resolution entitled Resolution Supporting Submission of a Transportation Alternative Program Tap Grant. VDOT funding park, funding request for the phase one Palmyra Village Streetscape project along Stone Jail Street. SR1004, that's Court Square in Palmyra, Virginia, with an estimated county 20% match of the 268,000 dollar grant. 268,600 dollar grant if the grant is approved.
Do you have a second? Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Booker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passed by zero. C, advertisement of a public hearing for the issuance of Virginia Public School Authority Series 2021 bonds, Mr. Doll.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, again, this is another, we're moving forward with the debt issuance as the board had indicated for the. For some FY22 school CIP projects. So again, the board approved in the FY22 budget, they approved a budget of 3,771,000 for school CIP projects. Again, for as far as debt funding goes for school related projects, VPSA, the Virginia Public School Authority. Offers the lowest cost of funds and the most efficient process for financing this. They're also allow some customization with the principal payments. Remember, we know we have some large debt, debt payments falling off in 2025 and even within the next couple fiscal years too. So they'll allow us to, to structure this, this transaction so we can have interest only payments for the first couple of years. And then start seeing principal payments once, once those big debt years fall off. So again, as, as we discussed, the VPSA application, well, one, the school board did, did approve to move forward with an application. To submit an application, the VPSA application was submitted on August 30th. With everything going through, at this point, VPSA does allow for bond amounts to be changed, not increased. They can be lowered up until October 4th, 2021. So if there's any final adjustments to amounts, they would need to be considered after the public hearing at the September 15th board meeting. So, so what you're, what you're authorizing tonight is authorization to advertise for a public hearing. A public hearing to, for the resolution for. The public hearing to, for the resolution for the debt issuance would be on September 15th, 2021. And at that meeting, the board would decide of any other changes if it needs to be lowered. Just a few things on some power amounts at this point. So if you remember originally what was approved in the, kind of what I prepped and gave the board a little preview for last week, what the board approved in the CIP was a million five for the Carries Brook HVAC project, a million 250 for the Abrams Academy renovation, and then just a little over a million dollars for 10 school buses. After talking with Dr. Gretz and looking at some of the, some of the quotes and things that were being fine tuned a little more, I discussed with the board that, that the quote and, and, and some of the estimates for the HVAC, HVAC project were not adequate, and there needs to be some additional funding to complete that project in the way it needs to be completed for it to be an efficient overall system, whether it's just in the classrooms and in the hallways, you know, to be a, just one, one good working system instead of kind of patching in and, and just doing the, doing the classroom HVAC unit at this point. And then also, so discussing that with Dr. Gretz, Dr. Gretz, they are getting some SER funds. Those are funds specifically that they can use for certain projects related to, uh, some school quality issues, whether it's water, they have some air quality issues that they can utilize those funds for. So, so Dr. Gretz had came, had discussed with me that they feel that a lot of those project costs, they can utilize the SER funds for that, but there are some things within SER funds that would not qualify. So we've, we've kind of re, uh, re-racked and stacked the amounts for all those projects a little bit. The dollar amount is, is basically the same though. So unless the board has any, you know, hesitation with, with, with those changes, you know, I'd be happy to answer any questions on that, and I'm not sure if Dr. Gretz is, is by chance at the board meeting.
So, uh, so are you saying while the, uh, where it says VPSA application that the HVACs replacement is going to be 2,000,530?
It's, yes.
And at, and renovation for Abrams is going to be 200,000?
The SER funds.
No, 200,000 is, is what would be needed from county, from a county contribution.
Okay, alright.
Yes, Dr. Gretz had stated that, that they're, that they can utilize the difference of those, the difference of the million two and the 200,000 using SER funds to do the upgrades to that building.
Right. I'd be stuck with that.
I'm sorry, Ms. Booker?
Okay, I'm just adding them up and then just. So the, the Abrams Academy will cost 1,250,000.
I don't, no, I, I don't know if it's going to cost that completely. I mean, again, they don't have an open wall scope for all that, it could be less than that. But after they, after they're going through some of their initial S of the work, they looked at things that SER funds could be utilized for and things that, that they want to do in the building that SER funds certainly could not be utilized for, and the things that they couldn't be utilized for works out to the 200,000.
Alright, any questions? My only thing would be is, um, I know we can do the thing where we do the interest payments, but this is where I thought we talked about using fund balance to pay the payments for the first three years until the other stuff falls off the books and then we replace it.
Yes, yeah, well, yes, this is, yeah, so what we would do, we would do interest only, you're correct, Mr. Chair, we would do interest-only payments the first two years, and we could use fund balance to pay the interest-only payments. And then again, once the big debt falls off, so it's, it's preserving our fund balance even more.
Yeah, but pushing debt down the road. Um, alright, that's, that's for discussion at a later date.
Well, I mean, a-again, we, we, we could certainly change that.
I mean, my only, my only thought process on that is it's just more interest that you pay, although I know we're getting it for a greatly reduced interest rate. Or a very low interest rate.
Yeah, if, if, if it is the board's inclination that they think we should pay full for an interest payments two years, you know, we, we could certainly do that. This was just a way, while the project was, while some of the projects were, were being completed, you know, sometimes projects are being completed, you know, you can utilize a mechanism with some interest only payment, one or two years. But if the board wants me to move forward with, with one full principal interest payments, I, I, we can make that change.
How much were those interest payments to me? Uh, I think it was for about two years, we were going to use the interest to, uh, finance that until we got to the big payment.
Mr.? Talk about the overall amount for everything that we're talking about, or just for this, this piece specifically? So when I, when I originally came to the board for the full two, uh, for the 25 million, the estimated debt service payment on some really conservative interest rates of 1.6 million dollars a year. We know with, with some of the delays in getting the debt, that we'll experience that full amount, and, and we're certainly hoping that, you know, we've got probably about a 1% interest cooked and baked into our estimates for debt service amounts. So we are certainly hoping that the interest rates will come in lower than what we've got estimates in there for. But again, if, 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 if the board wants me to move forward with a different, you know, structure for these payments, I, we certainly, I can certainly discuss that with our financial advisor, and I'll, financial, so on the meeting for September 15th.
Leave it like it is, okay. Uh, we're getting rid now, it's to leave it like it is, so.
And, and so again, just, so some, uh, so the board has some dates for timing. So again, the VPSA application was submitted, um, you know, the board's going to be considering a, a, a resolution in a public hearing on, at the September 15th meeting. You know, October 4th, up, up to October 4th, localities can change, kind of change the dollar amounts in that, in, in that VPSA application. And then really, you know, after that, you know, it, it's really a matter of kind of some motions of, uh, you know, just VPSA in their process and, and, you know, moving forward to closing through November 9th. So that's, that's all I have to the board, I, I would be happy to answer any questions. Uh, again, this is, this, this action is authorized for a public hearing. Um, I apologize, it's ratified for a public hearing, and just due to the timing of things, um, we had to get in an advertisement last week. Um, so it would go in the paper this week, which would hit the paper tomorrow. And it, it's just, um, you know, it, it's just a little bit of a crunch. So anyway, this is to ratify, uh, the authorization for a public hearing. And then certainly at September 15th, the board can make any changes or, or anything from there.
Okay, any questions? Do I have a motion?
I move the Board of Supervisors ratify the advertisement of a notice of public hearing to be held on September 15th, 2021 for the purpose of financing not to exceed $4 million VPSA bonds for one, certain capital improvements for its public school system, including without limitation, A, renovations to Abrams Academy, and B, HVAC replacement and related improvements to Carries Brook Elementary School, and two, the acquisition of up to 10 school buses and to pay costs of issuance of the bonds.
Do I have a second? Motion's made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Mr. Weaver, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, thank you, sir. D, FY22 CIP Fire and Rescue Additional Funding Request.
So Mr. Chair, once we get to the motion, I'll, I'll explain this a little bit. There's been a few changes from, uh, from Mr. Lai, and I think, I think I saw him, is, is Mr. Lai in the room?
Yes, he is.
Okay, alright. Well, I, I'll go over just a quick presentation, and you can answer any questions, and we can discuss there. Again, you know, the board remembers you received an email from Mr. Lai, and again, he just, he, uh, came to talk to the board at the last meeting about requesting additional funding for the apparatus requested in the fiscal year 22 CIP due to price increases. Um, and as Mr. Lai stated, price increases were directly due to raw material price increases and manufacturing price increases, both of which are attributed to COVID-related issues. Um, so the FRA would like to revise the prices, um, and, and the amounts that were approved, um, move forward with, with financing for the, for this, uh, for these, uh. So again, Engine 20, the original amount approved by the board was 710. Um, FRA is, is requesting 755, Tanker 10 approved 848. FRA is requesting 495, Attack 20, uh, was 200,000, they're requesting 239. Uh, one change that has come up, uh, originally that what was approved was Response 5 for Lake Monticello, uh, Lake Monticello was approved for 96,000, and, and then they were requesting 99,000. After discussing that with, uh, Mr. Lai, Mr. Lai came back and, and discussed that Ambulance 554, which was not approved in fiscal year 22, um, in the current amount, and, and that's not the current full price. If you remember, I think it's a year, year and a half ago, and, or maybe later. But one of their ambulances was an accident, and it was totaled, so they received insurance proceeds. Um, what they want to do is, is, is get the difference of the insurance proceeds plus the 100,000 to purchase a new ambulance. So that's the one change, and then again, Car 1 was approved for 71,000 in the budget, and current price is 74.5, and then, uh, the last one is 53. Um, it says, uh, it was requested at 1.6, and it was approved for 1.3. Um, currently, the current price to purchase the, the ladder, ladder apparatus that they want to purchase is 1,670, um, so the FRA is requesting additional 370,000 in addition to the 1.3 that has been approved. So just kind of looking at these items, so this, I, I think the total of this comes out to 472,000. If the board decided to go forward with this, um, to, to approve additional debt issuance for these projects, that would, uh, that would, uh, equate to about 55,000, just, just for your reference, about 55,000 in additional annual debt service. But again, like I said, s- so the motion, the motion, the way it's set up is, is the board can either approve, not to approve any additional amount, approve the amount that, that they're requesting, or some other amount. Um, and so those are the, the six piece, uh, piece of apparatus that they're requesting. So again, if, if, if the full amount was approved for all those, the total comes out to an, in, in, in additional funding of 472,500. Um, and so if, if, if Mr. Lai wants to chime in, or Mr. Chair, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? From anyone?
What is Car 1?
That's the chief one's car.
So it's a quick, quick response vehicle that the county fire chief uses to respond. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, hearing none, thanks, Mr. Lai.
Thank you.
Alrighty, folks, do we have a motion?
I move the Board of Supervisors approve additional FY22 Fire and Rescue CIP debt issuance funding for the following apparatus, Engine 20, additional $45,000. Engine 10?
Tanker.
I'm sorry, Tanker 10, additional $11,000. Attack 20, additional $39,000. Ambulance 554, additional $4,000. Car 1, additional $3,500. Tower Ladder 53, additional $370,000. For total estimated, for total additional funding of 472,500.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Booker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passed by zero. 7A Appointments, E, Board Commission and Committee Appointments, Ms. Solis.
Uh, Mr. Doll, thank this, um, so again, this is an appointment for the Ag Forest District Advisory Council Land Use Position. Um, there was one application, uh, in the package and one individual expressing interest, and that's for Overton McGee, and Ms. Solis, can you, I don't remember, is this a reappointment or, or a new position, or, or a new appointee?
Uh, it's for appointment, new position.
Okay. And I can open up, if the board's interested.
I move the Board of Supervisors approve the following Board Commission and Committee Appointment, Agricultural Forest District Advisor Council Land Use Position, Overton McGee. Begins terms 9:04, 2021, and.
You gotta move the thing, Mr. Doll.
06:30, end term 06:30, 2025.
Second.
Got a motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Eager, all in favor, say aye.
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 Well, kind of looks like a rough gentleman to me, but I think I'll go ahead and say, aye. Chairman votes aye, motion passed by zero. I'm sorry, I, I gotta give him a hard time, I gotta give him a hard time. Eight, Presentations. F, VDOT Quarterly Updates, Bethel Caffialo, Alu. Operations Engineer and Mr. Saunders, VDOT Residency Administrator. Bethel, are you there?
Yes, I am, good evening, can you hear me alright?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, good evening, Term Chairman, members of the board, I'm glad to be back and hope that you've all been well. I'll just be reviewing, um, the changes and updates from our latest monthly report that was released today. Um, to start off, just a little bit scrolling down with Smart Scale. During the last round, round four, there were two projects in Flavanna County that were funded. That's the 60618, Lake Monticello of Turn Lane, and we actually just had a scoping meeting for that last week. So we're getting started on the preliminary design for that now. And then the other one was 250 and 631, roundabout at Troy Road. And for round five, we're already starting to have conversations about the projects for that, and we'll be getting in touch with the county in the next couple of months to review, um, some of those options. And then the pre-application will be due in March, and then we'll, we'll just continue with, um, those dates and the application deadlines next year. Um, and then scrolling down with projects, um, we've got the, the Route 656 bridge work that's being worked on right now, and they're expected to be done with that, um, at the end of this month. And then, like I mentioned, with 60618, we just had our scoping meeting, and so we're getting started on that project right now. Um, if you want to scroll down to, like, the resurfacing, we, um, shared the list of roads that were going to be resurfaced, um, in the county. Uh, I think it's been several months now, but we've just been notified that, um, our contractor is getting started up in Orange County right now, and in the next probably month or two, they're going to be started, um, in Flavanna County. So we'll make sure to have signs up and message boards before they actually start any work, but I did want to let you know that, that will be starting soon. Um, so if you have any questions about that, or any of the roads that are on the resurfacing list, please, um, reach out and let us know about that. And with Traffic Engineering, um, we're, we're still working on the Route 250 Speed Study as well as the Route 616 Corridor Safety Study. Um, and our traffic engineers recently started working on a speed study on Diamond Road, Route 676. Uh, we've also been, um, having conversations with Lake Monticello about signs directing, um, motorists to the right gates, um, so that's an initiative that we're working on. Um, and then we do have another CSOI allocation that we're expecting, that's the County Safety and Operational Improvements Funding that the county receives. And so I do have a project, um, like a site distance project that, um, Mr. Doll and I talked about Route 6 and 659. I'm preparing to, um, perform work there soon, but if you have any other, um, project ideas. But if you have any other project ideas that you'd like us to consider to use some of that CSOI money, please let us know so that we can perform some of that work across the county. And then lastly, the end, just the, we've got the land use and then our maintenance work. Zions and Palmyra have completed about 100 work orders so far, just in the last two months. And so they've been hard at work and I'm sure the next several days they'll be hard at work with storm cleanup as well. So we're thankful for all of their contributions. And that's it for the update. Is there any, are there any questions that you guys have for us? Or anything you'd like us to take a look at?
Bethel, I have a question.
Sure.
This is Patricia Eager. I had a constituent call me. She lives on 250. And she said that they're doing work on 64 and the trucks are going by her house and waking them up. Can you tell me what's going on? She said that cement trucks are coming in the middle of the night down 250.
It might be, there 64, I guess it was a week or two ago, was getting resurfaced. So they were resurfacing 64, kind of what, like west of the Zions Crossroads intersection. So that might be it. I think I had heard that some of those asphalt trucks were coming down 250. Is that around the area that she lives in?
Yes, it is. She lives across Fieldstone. So is that finished now?
Yes, there should be finished and Alan, maybe if you know more, but I, I'm pretty sure they're done. But I can check in with them and make sure and reach out to you, real citizen, to, to let them know exactly when they'll be done, if they haven't been done already.
Yeah, I realize that you can't ask them not to take 250.
Well, it may also be the Diamond interchange at exit 125 because there's a lot of, you know, dirt being moved there as well, too. So, so they may be coming down 250 on 125 possibly.
Now, does this VDOT crews and Palmyra and Zions Crossroads headquarters have responded to 100 work orders in fiscal year 22 or or for fiscal year, you're not in 22? Am I reading this wrong?
In fiscal year 22, so since July 1st, they've responded to 100.
That could be dead animals or moving trees. We gotta love.
Kind of confusing.
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna bring one thing up again. On Route 659, when you come down Route 659, they've got to sign up for 15 miles per hour. As you come across the roads coming into township of Columbia. The far as the roads that are in Columbia, not Route 15, I mean Route 6 or 659. 659, I don't think should be 15 miles an hour. And also the curve that's up there right before you get to the stop sign, used to have a warning sign about that curve and somebody got that knocked down and never got put up years ago. So those two things.
Okay.
Like I said, people drive by that 15 mile an hour sign and never pay attention to it.
Right.
And Boston Road, again Riverside Gate, I, I live there, so I experienced it personally. I mean, I turn my head both ways, look both ways and, you know, pretty much at least once a month, as soon as I turn back around, there's another car right on 250 and I'm usually maybe two seconds away from being hit. So it's, it's an incredibly dangerous exit there for the speeds that are coming through that. And I know we've spoken about the fact that, oh, maybe that should be done through enforcement, but you know, it doesn't seem to be working. And we have had accidents there before and one probably during the last five years. And maybe, maybe a rumble strip, you know, kind of just, just letting people know that heads up. And there's something else happening there because it's, there's a lot of traffic that goes out there.
Well, thank you for bringing it up. We'll definitely continue to monitor that location and look at different options for things that we can do like rumble strips, like you mentioned. So thanks for bringing it up.
They come around the curve.
Come out of it in a bus.
By the time you see them, because you look down, when you're looking down, you're looking at trees before the curve, so you never see the car. And then you turn and look to the right and then you turn to look to the left and the cars just come behind the trees. You know, if you're not careful, it's easy to make.
I can tell you, I'll second that because I've driven a bus out of there before. That is no fun coming out of those two intersections if you're in a bus.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing it up. We'll definitely take a look at it. We've, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a problem area. So there, we definitely need to do something. So we'll talk to our traffic engineers and work up a plan for how we can mitigate the, the concerns there.
Thank you.
All righty, any other things? As always, thank you guys so very much for all you do.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too, dear. G, Thomas Jefferson Planting District, 2022. It's draft.
Old southern jar.
Agenda. Dominique, I'm sorry, Dominique. They got me messed up up here. I can't pronounce yours. You go right across yours. That's what's got me going sometimes.
For those who don't know me, my name is Dominique Gloverada. I'm a planner and legislative aide at the PDC. David Blunt hired me about two years and two months ago. So I've been with the PDC for a little bit while now. But this afternoon, or I guess this evening, we're going to be doing a little bit of an overview of our legislative priorities. And then the legislative regional program for 2022 as well. But as always, I want to start off and say it's always a pleasure when the PDC gets to work with Fluvana County or any of the six localities that we represent and coming to our board of supervisors meetings. Always a reminder. So we'll just dive right into it with our legislative and budget update. And we've had a really busy year in the general assembly, as I'm sure you can imagine, given COVID and a lot of the economic recovery bills that have popped up. We took a very short session in January and then they added a little special session on to the end of that to sort of create a normal session for this odd year. And then the general assembly just finished a very brief special session in August to appropriate about 75% of the state's ARPA funding, the Federal American Rescue Plan Act. And as you can imagine, it's been a pretty busy year in the general assembly, lots of bills, lots of things popping up. But we're hoping to get everything through that we need to push our state through it, right? As for the development of the 2022 regional legislative program, last year, given that it was kind of an abnormal year, we sort of seized the opportunity, David and myself, to do a shorter legislative priority list. And that's available to you in the packet and as well as up there. And you'll notice that we took out a lot of the positions we've just had over the years that have been the same. And thank you to Fluvana County for always helping with that and establishing what our positions are. But our top three asks or positions right now, we're all for money and tools regarding COVID recovery. Our continuing position on state budget items or including large items that pertain to public education funding. And then third broadband, which I'm sure we all know is an incredibly pressing and important issue right now, especially for our children and our public school systems. I think one of the saddest stories I heard when sitting in meetings for legislators and lobbyists was hearing about families who have to drive out to McDonald's, you know, to take their kids to get Wi-Fi access to do homework when the public library is closed because they simply just don't have availability in where they are in such a rural locality. And so those kind of things really keep you going and I'm always advocating for the expansion of broadband. And the PDC is working very closely with a lot of cooperatives to undertake that effort throughout the state. And we appreciate, as always, any feedback you have on any of the priorities or any things you'd like to have included in our program or FY 22 program. We'll look to make any required revisions or any changes in priorities that we hear from you and other localities in the region. And David and myself will do that and get a revised draft back to Fluvana within the next month, at which point we can revisit y'all and then again in November and get your approval for the program. But at this point, I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
What is behind whether tools and supplies are necessary, maintenance, safety, and safety? Okay. Okay.
As you'll notice, there are just three sections there. We're covering communities, budgets and funding and broadband. And as you might remember, we typically have a several page long document that David especially spends a lot of time working on parsing through. And I help him do some of the background bill research. But this year, as I mentioned, it was a special or abnormal year and we just thought we may as well tackle these three primary issues and not really overwhelm the packet with things that we typically are consistent on. I'm happy to answer any questions or David, if there is anything in the grass and the weeds.
Well, I don't know if this is covered adequately in there. But at the VACO convention with the board directors and everyone else, the biggest thing we had issues with, and it did not matter the size of your locality. And I don't know if they're included in SOQ positions or not, as bus drivers. It does not matter the size of the locality. And RICO was over 100 bus drivers short. Fredericksburg literally was going out to fire and rescue, trying to get people that drive fire trucks to come drive school buses. So if we can put something in there, some kind of pressure on them, that, I mean, to add that in, if it's not already, I'm not familiar with what are and what aren't SOQ positions.
Yeah. I don't believe that's an SOQ position and I think. That's, I don't believe that's an SOQ position, but I know that we've had some times in the past where when we've talked about funding for positions, we've gone ahead and enumerated certain ones, guidance counselors, et cetera. So I think that's a great idea, given what we've seen here the last couple of weeks and your discussion to.
Did not matter. I mean Fairfax on down to the smallest county in southwest Virginia. Everyone is in dire straits. I mean, in fact, in the larger cities, they just sent out messages and said, sorry, you gotta get your kid to school any way you can. We're not providing the bus driver. If you listen to our radio, I mean, they're, they're pulling everybody they can out of the woodwork to go drive a bus that they can get to drive a bus. And you have people driving three and four routes today. So if there's anything we can, any way we can add that in.
I think that would. Because of COVID, we've always needed.
We're 10 bus drivers short. We only have 69 routes.
Yeah.
And that's what pulling everybody they can to drive a bus.
But we have, we haven't had this magnitude of
No, ma'am.
shortage of drivers, but we've always had it.
We've always been.
It's pay. We need to pay.
We've always been short on it, but it's never been this bad that you couldn't find it. And, and I mean, it is, yes, partially because of COVID. But the biggest thing is pay.
Yeah.
And that's why I say, if they're only going to give us money for SOQ positions, without a doubt, bus drivers should be mandated as SOQ positions. Without a doubt, if you don't get them to school, you're not getting it done.
Ms. Booker, I'm not sure that I, I heard your specific question. I think it may have had to do with the tools and supplies related to education.
No, I didn't see, we didn't see all of the whole slide.
Oh, okay.
It is cut off and that's why I wanted the whole public need to see the whole slide.
Now, like shortening it up, you don't want to cover them up with stuff because then they stop reading. I mean, I'd say it that way, you know that they do. But if we could get a special bullet in there somewhere, just saying, especially with the crisis on bus drivers around the state.
Yeah, I'll use an analogy. I know a couple of years ago, there was concern in some of the other counties in the region about law enforcement funding. And I think even particular to the state police funding, which, you know, always a supplement to your local sheriff's department and, and, and law enforcement in the county. And I remember we put, you know, added that specifically as well. So I think this is a great time to add.
That's what I'm saying. It didn't matter the size of your locality. Everybody that walked through that room was blessing just about the lack of, anyway. We're going to try to give you some help at the VACO level.
Are there any other questions from the board members?
Thank y'all so much for all you do. We do appreciate everything.
Likewise. Thank you.
Thank you.
G, Thomas Jefferson Planting, I remember, we just did G, forgot to put my check. H A R P A, uses presentation, Ms. Toler.
We wanted to do a quick presentation for you guys just to discuss what can and cannot be used with the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds. It's important to keep in mind, the paper that she just handed out to you is, is a quick reference guide that the Treasury put out. I'm not really going over that tonight, but a lot of the information is in there, so you guys can hang on to those. It's important to remember that the American Rescue Plan Act is a huge act and there's only a very small, relatively small portion of it that actually applies to counties and governments. So that's, that's what we're going over, not the entire thing, just the information that will apply to us.
Before you, Mr. Chair, I just have a question. I've read the, oh, how many things there? Do we have staff to be able to, to handle all of what we do, what we are capable of spending the money for? Because there are a lot of things we can't spend the money for.
There is a lot.
You almost need a person just, and this money is going to be with us until 20, what, 24?
There, it, there is a provision in there that you can use some of the money to, for administrative costs.
I thought I saw that.
Yeah, there, there is that provision in there. I don't necessarily know, and maybe Mr. Doll's the one to answer that, I don't necessarily know that, that we would really need an additional person for what we, we need it for.
You stand, you know, we want more people.
But this is, a lot of this, people don't even know anything about unless you have somebody to.
One thing about it is we got three and a third years to spend 5.3 million. I think we'll be able to figure out how to spend 5.3 in three.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll be able to.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. We, I'm still, I'm a still push.
I can't believe you would push.
It's a lot of information. So to begin with, as y'all know, it's a total of, of just over $5 million given to us in two installments. One, we got in June of this year. The next will be a year out, so it'll be June of next year. Next page. Next page.
Yeah.
First, I want to go over what we cannot spend it on. And these are items that are very clearly ARPA says we cannot spend on these items. Contributions to rainy day funds, financial reserves, similar funds, tax cuts, any payments of interest or principal on outstanding or new debt, fees or cost of issuance on new debt, a settlement judgment decree or judicially confirmed debt, not on general infrastructure outside of water, sewer and broadband. And for general economic development or workforce development that unless it directly addresses the negative impacts of the public health emergency. Next page. So ARPA funds can be spent in five different categories and we'll go through each of these a little more. Supporting the public health response, addressing the negative economic impacts caused by COVID, replacing lost revenue, providing premium pay for essential workers and the water and sewer infrastructure and broadband. Next page. It's really slow in here. So in regards to supporting public health response, this is to fund mitigation efforts, medical expenses, behavioral health care and other county public health, public safety, human services and other related staff. And that'll go back to that premium pay we'll talk about in a little while. Some of the examples of the mitigation effects are the PPE, vaccine programs, enforcement of health orders and investment to facilities to address COVID-19 concerns. As far as addressing negative economic impacts, this is to address harms to workers, families, small businesses and impacted. As far as addressing negative economic impacts, this is to address harms to workers, families, small businesses and impacted industries as well as rehiring of public sector employees. Under this section, the general focus of the investments has to be to address the economic harm resulting from COVID-19.
Yeah, so that, just to go back to that one, you know, like for instance, if, if, which we didn't have to do, if, if, if municipality had to get a bunch of staff or, or lay staff, this would be a way for municipalities to rehire their, their, their staff.
Right. We didn't, didn't have any of that issue. So. Replacing public sector revenue loss to use funds to provide government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue experienced during the pandemic. This does not apply to Fluvana because we did not have a net loss in revenue. And then the premium pay for essential workers that offers additional compensation up to $13 an hour in wages to both county employees and other essential workers in the community who have faced and continue to face the greatest health risk due to what they do.
Why couldn't bus drivers be added to that list?
I don't, I don't know why they couldn't be.
I mean, it says education as well. And obviously they're at great risk because they're exposed to large people in a very small area. So.
And it does, and, and we'll talk about that a little bit more on that what it, what that definition actually is, is anybody who comes in regular contact to, who touches things other people touch on a regular basis. So somebody working from home or working in a closed office may not apply for that, but somebody who is dealing with kids with public, dealing with people on a regular basis would.
Um, Mr. Chair and members of the board, one, one thing I was just thinking of too, I know Mr. Weaver had the question, I don't know if it was last board, meaning the board approved 1.4 million dollars of, of a supplemental appropriation for schools. And a lot of it had to do with SIR funds. And I think some of it maybe had to do with ARPA funds. I don't know if it would be helpful at some point because like the county, the tools are also getting their, their shares of, of federal stimulus money that, that they use for and can use for certain things. I don't know if it would be, it would be helpful at some point to understand what some of those pots of monies are and what, what can they use it for. Like I said, I mean, I can certainly reach out to Dr. Gretz if that's something to school. I mean, the, the board would be interested in them.
Definitely. I think that's the point that I, I guess I'm trying to make. We need to reach beyond administration, not only the schools. We need to reach these nonprofit organizations, reach into the community and see what they're facing. And you cannot do it in the finance office or in, in the administrative office. You've got to go out side and pull in other people to see where the needs are.
Um, you can go on to the next page. And then of course we have the water sewer and broadband infrastructure. And that has a lot again to do with the clean drinking water, getting broadband to those areas of the county that, that are underserved or are not served at all. And that's pretty open, pretty broad.
Yeah, broadband, you can take it to right in the house. But if you don't have the money to pay for it, it does you no good. So we're talking about just putting broadband into underserved areas. And I see things there, but people if you can't afford to, they're not going to do you any good. So that's another thing we need to spread a little bit beyond just saying we're putting, oh, our county has broadband.
Next page. So going back to the public health and economic impacts, and this is a real important statement to keep in mind when deciding in those areas, what money you're going to spend. According to the interim final rule, to assess whether a program or service is included in this category of eligible uses, a recipient should consider whether and how the use would respond to the COVID-19 public health emergency. Assessing whether a program or service responds to the COVID-19 public health emergency requires the recipient to first identify a need or negative impact of COVID-19. And second, identify how the program or service or other intervention addresses the identified need or impact. While COVID-19 public health emergency affected many aspects of American life, eligible uses under this category must be in response to the disease itself or the harmful consequences of the economic disruptions resulting from COVID-19. So that's real important when you're talking about those two areas that you can spend the money in. It has to address COVID-19.
Right.
And it has to be in response to COVID-19. The next page. And again, another list of examples, preventing and mitigating the COVID-19 would be the vaccination program and that includes staffing equipment, so on. Testing, monitoring, contract chasing, supporting isolation and quarantine, paid sick and paid family leave because of COVID-19. Public health surveillance and data system enhancements, case monitoring, vaccine uptake tracking, enforcing health orders, medical response expenses, including a medic, medic, sorry, not being able to talk, including emergency medical transportation, transportation related to COVID-19. Communication efforts and purchase of PPE and disinfection for public health or public areas. Next page.
So just a quick question.
Yeah.
Because we've had this discussion. And you know, and since it specifically lists transportation, why wouldn't an ambulance be counted for that?
Well, if we needed a new ambulance because of COVID-19.
We're going to need two new ambulances next year.
And we have to have.
Of COVID-19, not because they're a replacement.
Because we have to have backups available. To me, that's how it would be related to COVID-19.
And you might get away with that with adding ambulances to what you already have. You wouldn't get away with that with replacing equipment. And that's what I'm trying to say. If, if you're adding something because it's, it's, you know, COVID-19 and we need the additional because we're going to put more trucks on the street because we're responding to so many COVID calls, et cetera, you could make that argument. Trying to. Go ahead.
Just going, you know, if, if we had, and I, I don't have the background or, but like, you know, if we had a hundred calls one, one month, but now we have 200 calls.
Right.
Next month, that makes sense that, that, that we've got a, an increased capacity due to COVID-19. So from that, I think you could justify that, but.
Yeah.
So what? What do we, do we have statistics on what our COVID, you know, cases are that are.
That's why.
We're facing responses from, and maybe that's something that.
Yeah, that I don't know the answer to. We can get the answer to.
Yeah, that's why you need some.
Yeah, I will tell you.
I'm just, I'm just real, I'm thinking out loud here real quickly that if, if you have, but we have three ambulances total right now. Is that correct?
With the.
The lake has four.
Yeah, the lake has four and Palmyra has three.
Okay. So we've got seven ambulances. So if you had a, a 20% increase of cases due to COVID, right, that would certainly justify getting another ambulance. I mean, just, just mathematically, right?
Well, and, and that would depend on what those numbers were and whether it was being handled with seven ambulances, whether we're getting seven ambulances on the street, whether we're getting, you know, there's a whole argument behind it that you would have to make in the end, when they, when they end up coming to audit us. And if you can make sense out of that argument, you know, great, you know, it, it, that's going to be on, on the board's decision to make, but you have to be able to, to defend it.
Yeah. I think going to that, how many times do you have all seven ambulances out that you would need additional capacity of ambulances?
Right. I will also tell you that we reached out, and I have the list right here. We reached out to Goochlin, Luisa, Buckingham, Albemarle, Green and Orange, and absolutely none of them are buying apparatus with ARPA funds. Not one of them.
Yeah. I mean, just since it specifically listed medical transportation. You know, it would seem like there's, there's. I mean, I guess maybe, maybe if you're looking at an urban area, maybe the higher density. Perhaps, but I mean, I, from what I understand that, you know, they're, and I don't know if this is still the protocol that, you know, once you've made a transport with the COVID patient that you have to go ahead and, you know, sort of.
They are supposed to.
Take it out of.
They are supposed to disinfect that disinfection process because of the machines we bought with the care's money takes 10 minutes.
Yeah. And that's, so that's, that, that may be different.
Right.
I mean, I think again, you, you would almost.
I should say, that's what I was told.
It takes long, much longer. It takes 10 minutes to spray it, but then you have to let it sit for an hour and a half, two hours for it all to dry.
I see. And what, and what I was told by, by DRT at Palmyra, and then again, just what I'm told, I'm not the one doing it. What I was told by them is it, it takes about 10 minutes. They put the, the spray inside of it. They close it up. They leave it for 10 minutes and they're done. So again, that's, that's just what, what.
And they're, they're right. It's with, with the spray, they're done.
Well, well, you.
But no, and, and what, I'm just telling you what I was told, but they, they closed the door for 10 minutes and they're back in the truck. That's what they, they said to me. And that's why I said 10 minutes because that's, that's what was told.
And I, I would suspect that, I mean, it isn't, you, you couldn't, you couldn't come in and say, okay, well, we have seven ambulances. They're all seven in use at one point in time because obviously you need to have emergency response vehicles ready for different types of emergencies in different parts of the county. They don't need response times. So you know, you can't just say, okay, you know, we've got seven ambulances, but we're only using three at any given time. I think you'd have to look at it really from, you know, the positioning of the vehicles at a particular point in time.
But you also have to have the caregivers on the ambulances as well.
Sure.
All right. Let's go ahead. Let's finish the presentation.
Next page. Is it going to the next page?
No.
What is the current contact tracing at the schools? What, what are the, what are the current contact tracing tools that are being used at the schools?
In the schools? I do not know.
See, that's where we. When you look at that page we just left, you need a person to do to monitor that. You all don't know.
We are, we are doing the best that we can.
No, I'm not criticizing.
No, I know you're not. I know you're not. We are.
We don't, we have a health department. And I, I don't know whether we have a part-time nurse or no nurse.
Some additional uses for it are improving design and execution of those health and public health programs. And the, the other big one to, to note is addressing disparities in public health outcomes. In recognition of the disproportionate impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on health outcomes in low income and Native American communities and the importance of mitigating these effects, the interim final rule identifies a broader range of services and programs that will presume to be responding to the public health emergency when provided in these communities. And that has to do with the, the census tracts and, and that would require a lot more research than I have been able to do to give you more information on that. But that is a, a thing we need to look closer into.
Well, the one, the one thing I can tell you, Fluvana County does not have the qualified census tracts. There are a few qualified census tracts within Charlottesville, but, but currently Fluvana does not have any.
Okay. To the next page. And then we go on to the premium pay and the premium pay is to provide that additional money to people who are in the public public risk, heightened risk areas. And basically it's to target those people that are character, due to the character of their work defines the essential work as work involving regular in-person interactions or regular physical handling of items that were also handled by others. And premium pay means you can go up to an additional $13 an hour in wages up to not to exceed $25,000 a year per eligible worker. The next page.
How long does that $13 stay there though? I mean, once the event is over, does it go back then?
It can only be used while we're dealing with, with COVID. And that would be something the board would have to look at is, is whether you change those pays permanently, you put a stipend because, I mean, we have done that before with stipends. And that would be more for HR and Mr. Doll to, to decide how to implement if that's something you wanted to do. And the next page. Now payroll expenses, this was something that we did use quite a bit of the care's money for, and it's a little bit different with the ARPA money than it was with care's money. This does say that they'll support payroll and covered benefits for the portion of the employee's time that is dedicated to responding to COVID-19. Now again, if you look back at the last rule, it tells you anybody who's spending time with other people, touching things other people are touching, they're going to consider them responding to COVID-19. So it's kind of a gray area there. You know, you read that and it's real specific and, and then in another section, it, it tells you how broad you can look at it. So there, there are some contradicting areas there.
Do any of our employees receive this pay?
Not right now. No, that would be something that the board would have to direct. And I believe that was the last page. Are, are there any questions that we can answer? That we didn't go over for you guys?
I mean, we're, we're thinking that we could use the payroll enhancement there. For bus drivers, but we can't do that. The schools need to do that.
I, I would think that you would need to look first at the schools, what they're getting and what they will have. Now it does say that not only can we pay that additional to county employees and public employees, but that we can give grants to nursing homes, to, you know, anybody else who qualifies that for them to pay their employees the same. That additional $13.
Still presumably be prevented from giving a grant to the schools for that purpose.
Yeah, that, that I couldn't answer for you. That would probably be something Mr. Doll would have to answer.
I'm sorry, Mr. Doll. Are you saying can we, can we give money to the schools for pay the bus drivers extra?
Yeah. As a grant.
Doesn't the students get money?
I would probably imagine you could. I, I guess my, one of my questions would be is do they ARPA funds and what are they using ARPA funds as well?
Of, of course. I mean, I'm, I'm assuming they don't have that, but.
Yeah, that's where I would start is asking that question. And then I don't see any, like I said, it says we can give it to private industries. I don't see why we wouldn't be able to give it to our own school employees.
Yeah. I mean, I, I mean, last time we gave money to the schools for other things. So yeah, I mean, I, I certainly think that the board could certainly choose to give the money to the schools. If they have a unified, you know, ARPA, ARPA fund eligible use.
Yeah.
You know, the, the fan mail that Kelly sent out this week had more information in it that, that I probably sent it to over a hundred and some people because we do not have that kind of communication in the communities. So that whole thing about COVID and the mitigation, we need, we can't depend on Blue Ridge Health District to come out here and do the things. We had COVID going rampant on one road in my area. Everybody is getting, now people are beginning to get the vaccination because they're seeing their loved ones getting it. But we don't have, because we're not in church. So you, that, that communication is gone. People don't look at their, they, don't, don't look at fan mail on their phones. I sent it to them. So there are ways that we need to be able to read. This thing is not going away as quickly. We're still in it. And we, we just, you know, the health department is, is doing some things. People that need the third shot. They didn't, I didn't even realize the third shot was being given until I just knew somebody else who signed up for. They didn't re, I didn't even realize the third shot was being given until I just knew somebody else who signed up for today to get theirs, and if I hadn't known that, and then Kelly put it in her fan mail. And so some way we need to do, I've been saying, we need a nurse and the nurse needs some help. We need to be going out in the community, the elderly people. Jabba does a good job with, with people, elderly people, but we're missing out on a, on a lot of areas. And if we didn't have those two clinics that we had at Care's Brook, we would, a lot of people would not have gotten the shot. And that was a community person pushed forward with Blue Ridge. So I just, when I read through it, I could just see all these non-profit people that not knowing how we're there and how we can help. You know, we gave grants with the other ones, you can do grants with this. We got, we're trying to put out the order, we don't have an economic development person now.
That's true.
Uh, you know, it's just, anyway.
Any other questions we can answer?
All that money.
All right, thank you very much.
I, I guess one thing for the board, I mean, are, are there anything, is there anything from, you know, some indication from the board as a whole that wants staff to look into specifically as it relates to the ARPA funds? I mean, I certainly, I certainly heard, um, Ms. Booker, you know, and, 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 and maybe I, I, I don't want to confuse what you're saying. Are you looking for like a, for like a county outreach person or something like that, Ms. Booker?
Yes, and I think when I, when I've mentioned it before, I was told that it's very difficult to find nurses, RNs, or LPNs, someone in that capacity. Now, I know there are some school systems in the title or the area that use school nurses to help, um, get the word out and, and be a sounding board and find out what's going on in the communities.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, we had success with our, our, our programs that we did for supporting businesses and nonprofits as well, whether it was grants or loans. Um, it sounds like we can still do that as well too, and so we might want to consider that if, if things, you know, continue to stay. I'm, I'm assuming that there's going to be more and more challenges for businesses to stay open, um, so I would suspect we might see that coming up.
And Eric, we, we cannot continue with, um, getting a meeting room that we were working on of down on where the old fire department. We've, we've, we've just vacated that, we can't, um, stand a performing arts center because our building, the administration building won't probably be due until, finished until 2015. Is that what we're thinking about, a permanent place at the performing arts center?
No, I'm, I'm honestly not, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit in the pinch here because, you know, we're, we're, we've been pushed out of the courthouse, um, you know, we've got and Cindy's trying to get some programs going back at the library, so it's, it, it's, you know, becoming, a, a little bit of a hassle there. You know, the performing arts center too, it, it's, it's, it's a hassle to do it in there too. No matter which way we go, there is not a good option for us. Um, you know, could, I mean, going back to the basement option that you spoke about, could we complete that and could that be a, 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 a temporary space to accommodate us because of, because we've been kind of pushed out due to COVID? I think there's, you know, there's maybe some room for that argument, but I, I don't, I don't know, I would, I would have to run that by our auditors a little bit and see what others are doing.
My only thought for that, if you talk about a temporary fix, and we were talking about how much that would cost to do that space. That's a lot of money to spend temporarily, and what use would we get out of it afterwards?
But the court, courts could use it, I mean, it's still a space where the community can, can, can use it. There is no space, I don't think, that you can say would just be there, nobody would use it. You would want it to have a life and a purpose, if you can't find that, then I agree, no, don't do it.
To me, I would.
We can.
If we did that, I'd rather do a building.
Hmm.
Are there any additional spaces to rent in the area?
How about the old courthouse? I thought we were going to use that.
Oh yeah, that's right.
So we were looking at the old courthouse and, and there's, again, it, it's not available, it, it's not, it's not very, um, public friendly. Um, you know, it, it's not, not a great space to get it, it doesn't have facilities. Um, and, and again, you know, it, it's probably no different in size than, than where you are at, at the library right now. And so maybe for most time, that's fine, um, but you know, as we're, as we're kind of getting into this, you know, I, I hate to say it, that we're kind of, maybe I'm, maybe I'm a little skewed right now since, since I'm COVID positive, but you know, as, as seeing kind of what, what has transpired, you know, to be honest, you know, being, being someone that was fully vaccinated, you know, I, I, I don't want to say, you know, I, I felt that I was not likely to get it, but, but I'm sure surprised I have it, that's for sure. So, you know, I, I am a little concerned on, on where, where does this go next? And, and, you know, what's, what's that look like from, one, just, you know, being in person, you know, the size of space that we have. It, um, it, it's, it's a challenge, trust me, you know, staff, we, we talk about it all the time, we're, we are just out of space. And then for the board, I feel like, I feel like on a traveling road show sometimes, just because we're just moving, moving from place to place to try and have a permanent space. If there was a way I could somehow get a, uh, some type of pre, prefab park or rec building, multi, multi-use building built, I think that would be the best of all worlds. Um, because I think there would be a, a use of it from a meeting space standpoint, but then, you know, there's certainly a longer-term use of it, you know, unfortunately from, from the county admin building area, you know, where we're, where we're anticipating doing anything for the DSS and admin building area. I mean, you're talking, you're talking a lot of time, you know, and, and we're moving forward with, with trying to get the design, but you're, you're talking a lot of time for, for site development, clearing land, timbering the land, design, doing all that. You know, it, it's potential, when, when we had these discussions early on, when we're, when we're looking back at, do we renovate? Do we renovate the basement of, of, of the admin building, or do we try and build some prefab building elsewhere? You know, maybe if, but we have to see how we could tie, maybe if there was a way to somehow, um, tie it to a park or rec building, maybe that's, maybe that's the best bet, if it's some prefab building that could be built, you know, in more of a quick, quick manner. But, you know, we are, we, we are struggling to, to, to figure out where we are going to be long-term for, for our meetings.
Understand.
All righty. Are there any questions?
No.
All righty. Now we'll move forward with the consent agenda. First up is I, minutes of August 18th, 2021. J, Raymond James Contract Extension is Toler. K, FY21A, the localities funding, funding fire department. Torin Mel, Mel. L, CRMF Courts Building Water Lines, Mr. Kreitzer. And M, CRMF Pleasant Grove House HVAC Replacement, Mr. Kreitzer. Anything we need to pull?
No, no figures in that.
No figures, go figure, go figure, no figures.
Ms. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, I approve M.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mr. O'Brien. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Most, uh, pass the consent agenda, we move forward with unfinished business, is there anything? Okay, seeing none, is there any new business? All righty, seeing none, I will now open the second round of public comment. Anyone wish to address the board? Please state your name and address, keep your comments to five minutes on a topic and directed to the board, is there anyone who should speak at this time? Ms. Harris? There's no one on Zoom, no one in the room? I will now close the second round of public comment, Mr. O'Brien.
Mr. Chair, I'm with the Savannah County Board of Supervisors and do a closing minute provision of section 2.2-3711A7, section 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Resident 1950, as amended for the purposes of discussing litigation.
Do we have a second? Motion's been made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Mr. Weaver, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye, we are now in a closed session.
Okay, I'm gonna try and get us into the breakout room here.
I'm just calling.
We haven't crossed our fingers.
Yep, it's my hands. Watch out.
Sorry guys, I gotta look at my phone because I got a bill from iCloud storage for 500 bucks today, some dude from Tulsa.
COVID will pay for it.
I had somebody call me today and told me that someone had ordered an iPhone 11 on my Amazon, $700 and some dollars. I knew it wasn't any good, I just called, I called Amazon. No, it's not.
True, Amazon, that's a bunch of crap.
What is?
Amazon with those false calls.
Oh yeah, false calls.
I don't need to have any response, I know when they call me.
Kelly, and so it, it, it pushed me in there a second ago, but now I'm
Okay.
Then above.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start over and see what happens, because I obviously did something wrong. Oh, well, okay, it says you're there.
You better watch out for watching you.
I did.
Okay, I'm not sure what I did, I, I'm gonna start completely over, so.
That's fine.
Okay, breakout room, assign and then I assign you, and then what do I do? That's what I thought, but when I hit open all rooms, it tried to pull in the other two folks that were in there.
Same, oh, yeah.
What is that? I'm gonna give it a go.
Very much so, Mr. Weaver.
What's that, Mike?
I said very much so, Mr. Weaver. I agree with you. Are we good to go, Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. Chair, I move the county board of supervisors adjourned, be adjourned from the, I move, Mr. Chair, I move to close me and be adjourned in the county board of supervisors for me again in open session. Be it resolved, the board of supervisors does hereby certify the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the opening requirements in section 2023711A of GoToWeb, 1950 as amended, and two, only such public business matters that were identified in the motion vote, closing motion, were convened, were heard, discussed, and considered or considered in the meeting.
Second. Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Mr. Weaver. Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver? Chair votes aye. We are now at a closed session. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mr. O'Brien. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?